All right, good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Anacortes City Council meeting of July 1st, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'm calling the meeting to order.[15.05][15.05][applause] Mr. Franciac, would you please take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, glad everybody was socializing at the start of the meeting and welcome. I've got a couple announcements and committee reports, and I'll start out with a Happy New Month greeting and a Happy Canada Day for our friends to the north. Also, Anacortes Foundation is still accepting donations for the 4th of July fireworks show, so please visit the foundation page and for easy online donations, 100% of the donations go directly to the event, and your name will be prominently displayed in the next version of the A-Town is Our Town magazine. Speaking of the 4th of July celebrations, this Thursday is the 4th. Town Photo, 10:00 a.m., fifth and commercial. Parade is at 11:00. Rock the Dock at Seafarers Memorial starts at 5:00 p.m. Fireworks will be at dusk, and that'll be 10:15. Reminder that all fireworks are prohibited in the city limits with the exception of approved licensed public display like the one we'll have at 10:15 that evening. So again, we're summer, it'll be warm, so remember fireworks can, it's getting drier and warmer, so be careful. All right, holiday hours, so solid waste schedule. City offices will be closed the 4th, Thursday, and we're open on the 5th. We will have limited staffing, so just be aware of that. There will be no solid waste pickup on Thursday, the 4th. Collection will take place Friday, the 5th. Waste management will follow our schedule as normal for recycling and yard waste. Gwemos Ferry will be on a holiday schedule, which basically means they operate on their Saturday schedule with the last sailing at 10:00 p.m. and then regular schedule after that. New domain and email, so I won't steal too much of Ms. Shu's thunder, which is later on in the agenda, but effective tomorrow, the city email address and website domains will transition to an @anacortes.gov. Previous addresses will still work just fine, and the city website and all services will remain unchanged. I'd like to thank Emily Shu, Jose Cervantes, and the IT crew for making this change seamless. This change supports city goals of robust infrastructure and online security. Again, we'll have more later on in the agenda tonight to talk about that. I'd like to welcome and thank Romanian visitors from our sister city. On Thursday, I had the pleasure of meeting with students from our sister city in Cronic, Romania. Seven students and six adults toured City Hall, shared a bit about their visit. They're being home-stayed by seven students who will be traveling to Romania next summer. So all of them are first-time visitors to the United States and first time to Anacortes, so they'll be here until the July 7th. So if you see some Romanian folks around, please welcome them to Anacortes and our country. Fire Station 1, starting today, Fire Station 1 is, has a dedicated second unit, fully equipped with both medic and fire suppression resources. Thanks to our citizen support of Proposition 1, this expansion will ensure critical emergency services are readily available at all times. So you can read more in our press release that we just put out this afternoon. Also in the Fire Department, we're excited to announce the upcoming delivery of our new ladder truck. Last report was near Tacoma on its way to Anacortes. It's a 2024 Pierce aerial ladder truck known as Truck 29. This new truck will further enhance our operations and response to serve the community. The current ladder truck is 23 years old, and we, again, we hope to have the ladder 29 delivered, introduced to the community for the 4th of July parade. There will be a 100th birthday party for the historic truck and a customary push-in ceremony for the new truck. Again, if everything works out on time, you'll get to see the new ladder truck on the 4th of July parade. Couple more Tommy Thompson Trail closures, 8th through the 12th, and intermittent Tommy Thompson Trail closures, July 8th through the 12th. So in cooperation with Samish Nation and State Department of Natural Resources, we'll be doing some geotechnical research. And then finally, interesting note, city population news. The State of Washington Office of Financial Management released their updated population estimates with a reported 18,270 residents. So that's up from 250 over our 2023 report of 1820, and last year we were up 140, so a pretty significant change from the Office of Financial Management. Okay, that's all I got. Appreciate your patience, and we'll go to Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you. The Fiber Committee met last Thursday. Really quickly, the numbers, as of Thursday, we had 2,440 accounts in service. That's combined residential and business. As for signups, market share, if you will, in the West End, Gwemos View and Pilot area, we are above 50% take rate in all three of those, and we are very nearly at 50% in the the EDA region. Citywide, we're at 49.8% market share for signups at least, which is fantastic. We, some updates on construction, so Summit X has begun work on backbone construction in the EDA geography. If you've noticed, maybe if you're in the south end of town, there's a bunch of construction trucks parked along 41st. We are expecting a second reimbursement for the EDA geography of about 370K in the first half of July, and staff will begin pulling fiber in the area as well in probably this next week. We also discussed financing. The Fiber Department has come up with basically revenue and cost forecasts for this year, next year, and the following year. For this year, we're running actually a little bit ahead on revenue forecast, projecting about $2 million, say $50,000 in revenue, and with that number increasing as signups continue to go up. And for long-term financing, we're looking at probably a 30-year bond, which would be, take place next year essentially, and interest payment of about 775K per year. So given current revenue projections and OpEx, we're looking at, basically, we would have a net revenue surplus of about 900K in 2025. So that means we can easily cover that bond payment and have some cushion basically left over. The Committee asked the Fiber Department, you know, basically, we've got these projections out a couple of years, we asked if we could get a projection out, say, beyond the sort of formal major construction portion of the project. We expect largely the construction will be done and most of the installs by the end of 2026. So the department's going to basically work on 2027, 2028 revenue and cost projections where we expect, you know, net revenues will be higher. There'll be some, you know, shifts to operating expenses, and so we should be able to fairly easily cover the cost of that bond going forward. And ideally, we target, say, after 10 years, basically refinance the entire thing and try to get it paid off within, say, 15 to 18 years. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Any questions for the Fiber Committee? Okay, next up, Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. We had a Finance Committee on June 27th. It was Mr. McDougall, myself, and our Fiber Director and Assistant. So we had a couple items to discuss. We're going, the Finance Committees or the Finance Departments going over the wholesale water rates. So they're just trying to reconcile those estimates for the capital cost, well, capital costs are not reconciled, but the consumption is projected and then reconciled at the end of the year. So they're just working on that. We talked a little bit about fiber financing, and that came up at our retreat, and we're still kind of, Steve is, oh, sorry, Mr. Hoagland, our Finance Director, is still kind of assessing what will be best to give us some cushion, but also with the idea that we probably will not take the full time of a bond, probably rebond it after 10 years. So just kind of a little bit of a discussion of that, but nothing set in stone. Probably will come back to council sometime soon. We talked a little bit about the solid waste rates. We've been hearing that the county's cost for tipping fees is increasing. Those rates have finally come out, and so right now, per ton, it's about $104. And as of September 30th, it will go up to $131. So that's a pretty significant increase. And then will continue to increase for a few more years to kind of right, to even out the reserves and whatnot. So something that's going to probably have to come before council is how and what kind of plan we want to put in place to absorb or reflect those increased costs to the consumer. Good news, June's, June sales tax was up for 2024 over 2023, so that was wonderful. And Mr. Hoagland was, I wouldn't say he was happy about it, but he was not negative. He was pleased. And then finally, we talked a little bit about Eden, which is our major software that we use for the city of Anacortes. Most departments somehow touch it in some way, is being phased out, so, or retiring out. They will no longer service it. So we, in the process, we've done, there was a request for proposals, there were eight responses, it's now been, we're, there's three finalists at this point, and so we've got a number of directors, I believe, and then staff that specifically interact with this software, will be having the opportunity on a one day for each finalist to kind of vet the different software options and hopefully have something come back in a little while. So that was the extent of our discussion at the Finance Committee.
Any questions? Okay, next up, Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Hacks Committee met last Thursday, June 27th, and we spent most of our meeting talking about a cold weather shelter for the winter. The county has made some resources available, and some of you may have read in the paper that they are, they would love to have a cold weather shelter dedicated in Anacortes or East County. And the county also has some pallet shelters, like the ones that are being used at First Steps over in Burlington. And so we talked about who might be best positioned to apply for space. We talked about zoning needs. We spoke with providers from Salvation Army, Anacortes Family Center, and how the funding would be acquired and used, like it would need to, there would need to be more funding in addition to the resources that the county is offering. So we had a pretty extensive conversation about that, and then we moved on to a recap of the North Star meeting, which was countywide, and the, some of us attended, and county commissioners, and we learned about countywide efforts to help reduce homelessness and increase services for people that need them, access to services, and what's going on with the housing work group as a subgroup of North Star, and different suggestions that were made to increase housing development in our neighboring cities as well, because we've done quite a bit in that area, but different things like lowering permit fees and parking requirements in other cities so they can keep up and build their share of housing for people. Then lastly, we talked about how hard it is to give, just get out the message about housing. There are a lot of words that are overused, like affordable, and, you know, what's a town home versus a cottage, and how difficult that is to convey in this kind of setting or in, or any other really. But in the last, most recent A-Town is Our Town, there are some good, there are some good pages there that help define that. But what can we do as the, as a committee and as a council to educate ourselves so that we can, that we can share that knowledge with everybody else too, so that we can all be on the same page and speaking the same language when we talk about what we're trying to accomplish? So more to, more to follow as we work on that. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
We had talked about, when we were at our retreat, I totally agree that getting the message out there and understanding kind of where we're at with everything. We had talked about at our last retreat, maybe having a work session around housing and how we can all be on the same page and help to educate our community. Do we know if there's any plan to have a work session around housing affordability, vacancy rates, that kind of thing?
We haven't addressed that specifically yet, but I think it's a great idea, and it's something that we should move forward on. Thanks.
Okay, next up is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Council Committee on Public Works met just before this meeting. We talked about three things. First of all, the 12th and commercial intersection. It appears later on this agenda, so we'll talk more about it in a few minutes. But we looked at some higher resolution images of the new design that we have for this intersection, which is no longer roundabout. We talked about some of the lane reductions that are proposed in the design and the potential consequences of that, and whether those are desirable or not. And we looked at some photos that I brought back from Alberta of how to visually separate bike lanes and pedestrian areas, including potentially in this design. We also talked about 16th Street improvements in the intersection of D Avenue and then heading west to C and B Avenue. This is an unbuilt street, an unopened piece of right-of-way adjacent to the new Early Learning Center going in at D Avenue. Public Works presented to us the question of whether or not we want a traffic calming island at the intersection of the unbuilt B Avenue and 16th Street. We, I don't think came to a conclusion as a committee, but accept that we want some kind of feature to physically control speeds on 16th in the vicinity of the Early Learning Center drop-off area. And so whether that is a traffic calming island or a speed table or some other feature, I think that's up for additional further discussion. We just know it won't be speed bumps, because Public Works has a religious objection to those, with good reason. We also suggested that there is a need for a traffic calming island at 10th and M at the intersection of the Library, Act Theater, and in a corridor with two churches, Coslin Park, and a number of trucks that wander through on their way to Trident. And that's been the subject of a lot of discussion over the last 10 years, so we reiterated that. And then on Kansas, where we have a future CFP project for a connection all the way through to Oaks Avenue. We think that connection is important, but we don't want it to become a raceway. Our final item on our committee agenda was looking at several requests for traffic or parking improvements throughout the city. We did not make it through that full list that Public Works had assembled, so we'll pick that up at our next meeting, which will be next month, because two weeks from now we've got our first work session, council work session on the comprehensive plan.
Questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I just wanted to add to that, you know, Mr. Walter, the wonderful presentation of the discussion that we had, but the only thing that I would comment a little politely is that we did not, we discussed M and the island, but we didn't come to any conclusions on that one.
I thought I made that clear.
Okay, I wasn't sure that you did, so, okay, good. Thank you.
All right, anything else? The Library Committee was moved, or rescheduled, so we don't have a report there. Any other announcements or committee reports I may have missed? All right, well, before we go into our, yeah, next up is Item 3F, Police Officer Swearing In. And Chief Floyd is making his way up to introduce this one.
Good evening, members of council, members in the audience tonight. We are back here again for the second time in three weeks, which is fantastic. I will tell you that the other agencies in the county, when I talk about how busy we've been hiring, they do not want to hear about our first-world problems. So tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Officer John Monigan, born and raised in Oak Harbor. Officer Monigan graduated from Oak Harbor High School. He is a Marine Corps veteran, and after receiving honorable discharge from the Marine Corps, worked locally as a first-level supervisor for the security officers at our local Marathon Refinery. Officer Monigan received extremely high reviews from his managers at Marathon Refinery, and they were disappointed to lose him, but they supported him coming to our department and staying in the local area. Joining us tonight to recognize his accomplishments and witness his oath of office are his father, John Senior, his mother, Mila, cousins Melissa, Michelle, Monica, Kayden, and good friend, Steve Johnson. So Mayor Miller, would you please administer the oath of office?
It's my honor and a privilege. All right, that's always wonderful, and welcome aboard. Okay, next up is Item 4, which is public comment, and it's an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. And I do have one person signed up, Dan O'Donnell, and the topic is water. And council has received your written input. And while you're working your way up, I'm sure you're aware that we have the FCS group that is working on making sure we get our wholesale water rates correct. So, Mr. O'Donnell.
Okay. Dan O'Donnell, 328 North Third.
A little bit closer to the microphone, if you can bend it down and make, we'll help you out here.
Well, that's fine. Thank you.
Here we go.
You all have my memo?
Yes, yes, we do.
I'd like to add one thing, please. In addition to having a public meeting on this, I'd like to have a public hearing, if that's okay. I'd like to add that to the memo, please. I'm asking you to review three things that are aligned in the memo there. I know I'm all alone, and nobody believes me, but you're charging way too much for water. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the council? Okay, come on up. And again, please state your name and the city, please.
Okay. Chiwamu, City of Anacortes. Council members, Mayor Miller, and the community, we have a communication challenge with our city government. I have been writing to, attending, as well as speaking at the city council meetings since the end of February this year, and the subjects including West 5th Multi-Houses Project, and also covered on two-way transparent communication and affordable housing. Those subjects impact our lives and our town. They require in-depth and two-way dialogue with all of you. However, the only venue to the public appears to be this three-minute public comment period, once a week, four times a month. And that's why I'm not going to continue to talk about housing affordability, the fundamental hypothesis, as well as profitability by the developers, as well as true affordability on residents. Six months have passed. I'm only aware of one town hall meeting announced by the city council. That was hosted by Mr. Fantini last week. And more than once, we have heard from council members that the council position is part-time and the pay is little. During the election season, the voters in each ward chose you among candidates based on your campaign message. Town hall is an effective venue, based on our last week's experience, to allow the public to interact with you and exchange viewpoints. We hereby request Anacortes City Council members host town halls to address subjects such as affordable housing code changes since 2014 till now, as well as the 2025 to 2045 comprehensive growth plan, and how that would impact our city and us, as well as capital projects in the pipeline, and also make those town hall meetings to the public in advance. An excellent suggestion made during Mr. Fantini's town hall was to use the utility bills, and the public announcement can be sent via postal service as well as email for those auto-pay customers, and that is effective. Currently, if you have town halls, we do not know. All we want is to make Anacortes safe and prosperous, and we thank you for your time and your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Okay, going to move to Item 5, which is our consent agenda, Items A through E, council. A through C.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young, to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to Item 6. Item 6 is a public hearing. It's ordinance 4080, Port of Anacortes Vacation. It's ordinance 4080, Port of Anacortes vacation, dedication, application for a portion of Ninth Street. So discussion item and possible action. This is our second public hearing, and Ms. Swetnam will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council, members of the audience. Let me start this here. So, as you mentioned, Mayor, tonight is the second meeting to address the Port of Anacortes's request to vacate a portion of Ninth Street and R Avenue. So just kind of how we got here, May 6th, council adopted Resolution 3150, scheduling the public hearing for June 17th. We, the council opened the public hearing on June 17th, heard about the details of the project, heard from the applicant, and the open, and the public hearing was left open and continued to tonight. So tonight, we're hoping to complete the public hearing and encourage council to adopt the ordinance that was in your packet. So to remind you all of the port's proposal, they requested a vacation of a portion of the southeast intersection of R Avenue and Ninth Street. In exchange, the proposal is to dedicate a portion of the port property that's shown in the kind of blue teal area on the opposite corner, plus pay some additional compensation. So again, the red is the area proposed to be vacated, the yellow is the area proposed to be dedicated. So compensation, as we talked about last time, the proposed area to be vacated is 8,050 square feet in the CM zone with a value appraised at $100,000. And the area proposed to be dedicated is 2,939 square feet in the CM zone. The value of that property is $40,000, and council for the port correctly noted in our discussions since the last time that the code says that if an area to be vacated is going to be used for right-of-way purposes, only half of the appraised value can be used as alternative compensation. So, so that leaves an additional compensation amount of $80,000, which the port has proposed be made by payment to the city and held in reserve for the purpose of making improvements to the public park or open space to be located on the vacated property. So since the last discussion, there's also been some, some discussion of the condition that was in the previous version of the ordinance, that the city wanted to ensure that that area be used for public park or open space. And so you'll notice in the ordinance draft that's in your packet, it's section two, which talks about the vacation itself, and subsection 2.3 says that the port shall use the vacated area to develop a public park or open space. And then there's a reversionary interest so that if the port fails to meet any of the conditions in the ordinance, the right-of-way that's vacated will revert back to the city. So, those are all of my comments. Staff recommends approval. I appreciate the coordination with the port in reviewing the comments from council at the last meeting, and I think the ordinance does a nice job of capturing those concerns and allowing the project to move forward. So I know that their representative of the port here tonight, and I'm happy to turn it over to him for any additional discussions.
Thank you, Darcy. I'll keep this brief. Adam Morrow, I'm with Pacific Surveying and Engineering out of Bellingham, Washington, and I'm here representing the Port of Anacortes. Brenda Treadwell, Director of Planning, Properties and Environmental, is also here tonight, and she and I are both happy to respond to any questions or anything that you might have. I won't go over what Darcy already told you. In summary, essentially, we've worked out the kinks and the details of how this all comes to be between the port's council and the city council, and that, those are now found in, as clauses in the new ordinance that you have in your packet. The port has reviewed this new ordinance and agrees with the ordinance language that's in there, so there's no question about that. I wanted to get that on the record, that they are okay with that language. We won't get in, I'm not going to repeat what we talked about during the last hearing. The majority of you were here during that, and the port, and the city's legal council also did a great job describing exactly where we're headed with this project. So just, I wanted to reiterate real quickly what this action will benefit in the future. This right-of-way vacation is an important step towards achieving the common goals of the cap-sante waterfront redevelopment, which will include connecting downtown with the marina, promoting safe public interaction and enjoyment of the Anacortes shoreline, enabling the construction of public gathering spaces, encouraging smart use of underutilized public property, and constructing safe routes of travel for cars, bikes, and pedestrians in that area. We thank you for your consideration of this request and look forward to next steps. And as I said, Brenda and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn it over to council, just a reminder, this is a public hearing. This is a second public hearing, so any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this subject, now's the time before I close the public hearing. All right, not seeing anybody, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn this over to council for deliberation and/or action. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molten.
Thank you. I actually have a question for Ms. Swetnam. And I want to say, thank you, Ms. Morrow, for reiterating the public benefits, which are great, and I'm very much in favor of this. I just, my question is about the ordinance, and I see that it's clear that the property will be owned and maintained by the port as a public park or open space. And if that does not occur, then the land reverts back to the city. I just want to check because things change over decades, and leadership can change, leadership does change, obviously, and I want to make sure that this is ironclad, that, and I expect that it is, but I would like the reassurance that this will always be a public park, open space, that 20 years from now, a new group of leaders will say, you know, we actually really want to build something there that's not public.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. And I would say that, you know, the mechanism that this happens is the ordinance gets recorded in the county land records, so it will be apparent to future city council members and future port commissioners that there is that reversionary clause, that if it is no, you know, if it doesn't be, you know, become used as a public park or open space, then it would revert back to the city. Now, that could happen, and future city council could always give it back to the port and let them use it for whatever they, they wanted to. But, but that's why we record ordinances that transfer real property interests so that those conditions are captured and run with the land for, for future parties, so. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. You know, just echoing what Ms. Molten said, you know, I'm just really wanted to commend the teams for working so wonderfully well together. Part of this enhancement that we're doing right now, and this of, one of many examples, is the collaboration between the city and the port, and also at the same time, the enhancement of public and quality of life here by creating those opportunities. I just think that, you know, it just shows how it bodes well for our city, and it bodes well for what, as we continue to strive for what we want to become, and those things that enhance all of our qualities of life. And I think in this case, this is something we've talked about for a long time, needing to realign the road, and then also needing it to just make it such that it's pedestrian-friendly and that we can enjoy it and love it the way we do. So I just didn't, I wanted to say that one more time of how much I appreciate the collaboration and the work of the teams working together in order to make this thing happen on behalf of all of the citizens. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Mr. Walters.
I think Ms. Molten's point is really the overriding one here, that we're okay with moving streets around. We'll be giving up some parkland as part of a separate transaction to make all this work. And so our objective is to trade park for park, to have an overall net benefit to the city by all the things that the port is going to do in this location. And I don't think, really, we have any problem making these transactions or any lack of confidence in the current port leadership. But we also have seen so many different documents, not just with the port, but with many other entities, that over the years, you know, it, it evolved, the situations evolve, and people forget, and things become quite odd. Maybe some of those documents weren't constructed well to begin with, but it's, it's the reason that we have to be careful when we're constructing a document like this, to make sure that our intent is preserved well into the future when conditions on the ground are all different and all the actors are different. Here, we're talking about reversion of the right-of-way that was vacated to the city if the port fails to meet the conditions. The biggest condition here that I think we're worried about far into the future is the use of the vacated areas of public park. If the port doesn't pay us the compensation, then of course, it would, it would revert back, and that, that's fine. But in the future, if the, you know, 20 years from now, whole different port, whole different city staff, whole different set of elected officials, 25 years from now, 30 years from now, or farther, if that area isn't used as a public park, we would get back the right-of-way. But we can't use right-of-way for park purposes. So, okay, so we get back to the right-of-way. Now it's right-of-way again instead, instead of whatever the port would want to use it for. I, I think that the effect of that is to block this future evil port from building on the parcel, which I think would deter them from using it in that way. But it wouldn't necessarily have a real effect of preserving the public park, because it would revert back as right-of-way, and we can't use right-of-way for park. I think that's good enough, but I appreciate the indulgence of thinking that through out loud here, because it is kind of complicated, and there are variety, variety of mechanisms to choose from to make these things happen. I, I think we probably need to think as broad as possible when we're doing these things to make sure we achieve what everybody perceives on, on paper today as our objectives, and maybe there were some other ways that we could have done this. But the other thing that we need to do is move these matters forward as quickly as possible. And so because this is a very theoretical problem that I'm articulating with a, a future port, not the current port, I'm comfortable with moving this forward right now. Even the two-week delay from the last time we saw this is a significant delay when compounded with the next two-week delay that we'll be encountering, or the next month delay. And our, the people of Anacortes, the nonprofit organizations in Anacortes, the Port of Anacortes, I think are really depending on us to move these things forward as quickly as possible. So with all that being said, I'm happy to, if we have closed the public hearing, yes, to move approval of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve ordinance 4080. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Clely McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Molten.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is item seven. First is 7A. This is South Commercial Avenue Corridor, Phase One, 11th Street to 13th Street. And this is a report from our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have a couple items to share. Open that up. I, I do apologize, the images in your packet weren't the best, so I did today get a better image that we can zoom way in on the details of the project, so there's that. And then let me bring up, oh, I left these open. How about that? So, South Commercial, that's the project between 13th and 11th, and includes 12th and Commercial. We've been through a lot. It's been a project since April of 2019. We have grant partners that have been in along the ride with us, and hopefully, with some direction today, we can get this project built this come, this coming fall, and have it done for, you know, end of the year or something like that, so. Speaking of the funding partners, so they, we had three different grants. One's the Transportation Improvement Board for $950,000. That's our oldest grant. They do want us either to spend the money or there's some consequences. So if you don't spend the money by a date certain, which I think we are going to get the letter soon that says, "Give us a date certain and stick to it," we will lose that funding, and that's not the worst of it. The worst of it is that we get put on the delayed list, which there's very strict and clear definition of how you get on the list, how you get off the list is not very well documented. So I would encourage us to, whatever we can, to try to stick with the calendar schedule and get this project done. The next grant is the Washington State Department of Transportation Bike and Pedestrian Grant. That's 1.371, 1188 million. That is still in play. They gave us that grant in June of 2019. The one that did come off was the Sandy Williams Grant. In the grant application, we specifically said it was a roundabout, and they were very hung up on that, and so they wanted to withdraw those funds. The Wash Dot Local Program, Wash Dot is Washington State Department of Transportation, we just call it Wash Dot for short, they are helping us, just like they did, to pave the rest of South Commercial with a six-week turnaround review time, which is really helpful, because they know the TIB, the whole TIB thing, and they don't want us to slip into delayed status. So they're coming to our aid, I guess, in, in that sense. Not so much with the Sandy Williams people, but that's okay. So this is kind of, this is a very rough cost estimate, but just to, to give you an idea of where we're at, their contract for engineering this thing is, is, the last amendment was up to $809,000, which for a, that's a lot for to, so the estimate to build a non-roundabout, just a signalized intersection, 12th and Commercial, and then the two intersections, 11th and 13th, the estimate came back at about two and a half million without contingency. The contingency's there, but we have a concrete-based road there, so there's not a whole lot of stuff we need to do in the road. There's a lot of work on the sidewalks and, and obviously, the new signals and luminaires. So, kind of the punchline here, the city of Anacortes, so this is about $200,000 less than what we anticipated to spend with the roundabout, then that is including not getting that 1.5 million dollars from the Sandy Williams Fund. The other thing to point out, too, is this, neither of these numbers have anything with land acquisition to build that roundabout. You would have had to do land acquisition to the tune of one and a half to two and a half million dollars. We never got into the, the exact number that we would have cost to get that land, but, so you're saving that as well. So you're probably, at the end of the day, 2.7 million or so in less cost to go in this route, even with the 1.5 million being taken away in grant funding. This is a really busy slide. I don't really like putting these up, but the, so the, these are kind of the features of the, the design, so it narrows the lanes to 11-foot lanes with an 11-foot travel, or sorry, turn lane, so that helps with reducing crossing times at the crosswalks. It also helps slow people down. When your lane's more narrow, you pay closer attention. The pedestrian bike facilities are, we were trying to scale it off of the 30% design, which I'll show you, but it's about the same width for those, those two items. And then there's this little strip in there that, that's kind of, the engineer said that's just where you put everything else, like hydrants, signs, grass, trees, that type of stuff. And we'll show you the, we'll show you the 30% design here in just a second. So there's going to be tactical delineation for the, the bike and the pedestrian dedicated facilities. We were talking about color as well, so feedback about color would be good. There was a, I thought he said Ken Moore, but customer Walters said Ken Moore in Alberta, so I haven't seen this, but there you can have, it's a different pour, it costs more money for the concrete, it costs more to build, but you money for the concrete, it costs more to, to build, but you can have a different color for like the bike lane versus the sidewalk, if that's something you're interested in. Then pavement markings, so there's mixing zones, so in the roundabout scenario as well, there's mixing zones where the bikes and pedestrians are in the same zone, but you just can't keep them delineated and separated. And you'll see that better with the design picture I'm going to show you. The reduced the speed, this is something that helped us keep that second grant from Washington State Department of Transportation. So we do have a 20 mile per hour speed limit sign between 12th and 11th. And so what they would like us to do is move that sign to the other side between 12th and 13th, and that's on the state route, but that also just makes it safer, and that was the purpose of the grant. So that's another point of discussion, just to kind of hear your thoughts on that. The curb bump outs, just south of 13th, oops, sorry about that. The bump outs at 13th will, is signaled to the driver to like slow down and it narrows. And then there's actually a, a table raised intersection at 11th, which would further make it real clear to a driver that this isn't just an open road without pedestrian bike facilities. And I'm going to skip the next slide, so I got a better one for you. This is just zoomed into 12th and Commercial. The thing I wanted to show you though, if you can see it, and that's why I've got this little cursor going, that's a truck. Those are the, those are the front tires and the back tires. So when you're coming to take a right-hand turn out of here to go south on Commercial, see how the stop line for this middle lane here to go straight or left, it's back this far? That's because that truck has to swing out and loops back to get in the lane there. And the same goes for, if you want to take a left off of Commercial and go down 12th, Safeway's at the bottom of the screen, same deal, this stop bar is back because the, this is a big truck, by the way, not just a little UPS truck or anything. This is a big semi. It would have to swerve out this way to go down this lane because the lanes are narrow. So those are, that's the, that's that. And then I wanted to zoom in and try to give you a little more detail because we got it today. So just kind of the anatomy here. I will start with 12th Commercial. So Safeway's below us. Like there's the roof. This little speckled looking stuff, this is the, this is pavement, this is the sidewalk, and then there's a bike lane right here. And this little hashed-out color on both sides, that's where I was mentioning, that's kind of where you put everything else, just so it's not in the, we used to, you like to put light poles and fire hydrants and everything right in the middle of the sidewalk, which is obviously not very ADA friendly. So that's where, that's where all that stuff goes. And then this is the same color right here, but just it's, that's, we're not going to put a bunch of landscaping there, but, and then this color is a little different. I don't know if you can see that, I can zoom in. Those are those raised dome textiles, so people that are, can't see very well, they can feel that with a walking stick or even with their feet and know to wait to get the crossing signal before they cross this intersection. So that's 12th and Commercial. And then again, the cross, the stop bar is back here, which is a little funky, but that's just because it's, it's not a very big, it's not a very large intersection and you have to get big trucks through. I just wanted to show you just real quick the other two intersections. So this is where the, this is where the project ends basically. And this is the through lanes and then the bike lane's still there and the crosswalk's right there. And 11th is a lot the same, other side, well, it's a little different, but further narrows down, the bike lanes, the bike lane does become not protected. These, the little zone here keeps them protected, but once you get past 11th, you are next to this, the travel lane on Commercial. And I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions or suggestions, I'm here to hear you. But we are, we are plunging ahead. I do have a chat, they call it a channelization plan, which is the first thing that I was supposed to get it Friday, but hopefully we'll get it here in the next couple of days and then get that to WashDOT and the six-week clock begins, where we're going to ping that thing back and forth and get to 100% design and get out to bid as soon as possible.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
That stop bar that you just pointed out, it was something that we didn't talk about in our Public Works Committee meeting, the stop bar northbound lane, south of 12th Street, right, right there, in that, in that through lane that goes north. Pretty weird.
Yeah, you need to do that or else the car will get hit by the trucks swinging out to get down.
The car, a, a car parked at the status quo stop bar, presumably right around there, would get hit by a truck in what, what turning movement? Coming from the west?
Uh-oh, what did I do? Hold on. Coming northbound. See how the, the back tire, that's the back tire, that's line right here? It'd cross into that lane and right, right where that stop bar is.
Oh, I see.
As it tries to turn, well, not tries, as it turns this way. Can you guys see my cursor? I keep using the cursor, like you can see it? Okay, good. That's been embarrassing. Same deal with this one. That's why this one's back.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Looking at the figure three, just to be clear, so the northbound lane, we will remove that kind of left-hand turn lane that allows for the bike and pedestrian protected spaces, right?
This turn lane, this is the turn lane in the middle, or maybe I should switch back to that PDF.
Right, oh, sure.
Is that better?
But right now, there, what am I thinking?
There's a third lane, yeah.
Right, there is, correct? Okay, so that's, that's going away because that's, that allows us to have that protected pedestrian and bicycle lane.
And sidewalks, yeah, that.
So I guess my question is then, when you are turning south onto Commercial from 12th Street or Oaks, there's two lanes there now. Will it only be one lane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Same with over here too. This is, will be just one lane. There's two right now.
There is, isn't there?
Yeah.
So how will that affect the light cycle, I guess, is kind of my question?
Well, the good news is you'll have a brand-new signal system here, so you'll have the latest and greatest in that. So the throughput will be a little bit better than kind of your just timer type of signal system. The channelization plan will answer that question a little better. It's not going to be a failing intersection. I think it had a rating of like C or B, which is good. It's not bad.
In the current, the, the current way it's set up now?
The new one.
Oh, and the new one, it'll be a C or B. Because I just, I mean, I look at, if you're on Commercial going southbound, I know that those lanes all kind of fill up and then back up across to 11th, right, that cross street. So I'm just kind of curious, has that been, how that, how that's going to impact that next intersection?
At 11th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times we'll see all of those lanes kind of fill up and then people have to stay behind or leave that intersection open if they're thinking ahead. And so I guess, I'm just, I think this is a very good design and I'm, I'm for it, but I just would like some clar, some clarity about how that, the improved lighting works to address those issues. Is it that it turns over faster or it just is more aware of where the cars are backed up? I'm just kind of curious about that component.
Yeah, they, they have light, they have, it's, it's not a camera, but it's a sensor. There are sensors on the ground as well, but it's not like, when you hit a signal right now on Commercial, it literally starts a timer. And we can adjust how long that timer, 30 seconds, 90 seconds, whatever. This will know if you're, if there's a car there, it'll, it'll flip. And then if it's just one car, it'll flip right back. But I do, I will have a intersection, a study done, so there's a signal intersection. And I don't have that right now, but the preliminary, this has been going on a long time, but I saw, we have studied 11th and 12th and 13th with this. And this is not as good on the first throughput as the roundabout, but it, it's not bad. It's not, it's not going to be a terrible mess, we'll be scoring the models.
Mayor Miller.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougal, then back to Mr. Walters.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rem. In the bullet points on the, the project, the last one, the project includes, includes a raised intersection at 11th. I think you may have gone over this in the past, but just if you wouldn't mind reminding me at least what raised intersection at 11th means?
It, so it basically means that the whole intersection will be up higher, and so you'll be at a same, well, that, that was asked in committee too, that I think there is some delineation between the sidewalk and, and the, the raised intersection is still a little, the intersection will be a little, sorry, the sidewalk will be a little bit higher still. But you'll, you'll definitely notice that it's called like a tabletop intersection because it looks like, it's like you get up on a table and then you come back down the other side.
What's, what's the effect or the, I guess?
It slows people down.
Just slow people down? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walters.
Well, so overall, I think that this design is an improvement over the roundabout primarily because it's 2.7 million dollars cheaper, but also because we have a better look down Commercial Avenue towards the arch and towards our downtown walkable core. It's a simpler intersection, we can control it somewhat better with lights. I completely support the reduced speed limit moving that a block or two blocks, whatever it is, where it's consistent with the downtown core anyway, and where you're coming to a stop anyway at this intersection, I think that's fine. And I think that also makes the most sense in the context of lane narrowing, because just changing the speed limit doesn't necessarily change how fast people drive, but lane narrowing has the potential to do that. And I think lane narrowing makes sense here because it is done in concert with getting bikes off of the pavement and into their own segment and up at the level of the sidewalk. Now, I provided some photos of a separated bike path pedestrian walkway where everything's in the same plane, at the same level, but the bike path is a different color. And that to me is a really important component of making this functional. And we talked about some alternatives to making the actual cement a different color, but something to really convey, that's the bike path, that's the pedestrian path, because pedestrians otherwise have a tendency to spread out and then you, we generate conflicts between pedestrian and bicyclists. And we have those in other contexts around town, so it'd be nice to be able to get it right here, especially because this is the starting point for the rest of South Commercial Avenue. But one thing we did talk about in our committee meeting right before this, and I remain concerned about, is that the loss of the southbound lane between 11th and 12th on Commercial Avenue that has the ability that, to turn right, to make a right turn on red, to go west toward the ferry. I certainly see people use that lane a lot. I think that they would use it more if it were right turn only with the dedicated through lane in our current, in our, in our current street, because then you wouldn't get stopped by the occasional car that gets into the far right-hand lane but isn't turning right. But here we don't have that. So that makes me a little nervous about how much this will back up. And I'm, I'm hoping that that concern can be placated by data that our design folks have. I think their, their data is pretty old now, and it was only at a particular time of year, I think February. So I'm, I guess I'm concerned about that data set as well. But, so that's one of them. And then the other is that with those stop lines being moved back on the left side of this diagram, south of, of 12th Street, and the northbound lanes, we're losing a little bit of stacking capacity in those lanes, and it's going to be a little weird as a result. It appears to me that the new left turn lane, because this is an overlay on the aerial photo, the new left turn lane is in exactly the same place as the old existing left turn lane? Because I see the existing yellow there. Is that, is that right?
I believe, I believe it is, yes.
So then the reason that we have to move the stop line back must be because of changes happening to 12th Street at the top of the diagram? Is that a correct conclusion?
The, the stop lines are placed specifically for those large vehicles.
Right, for the, but, but that's not where the stop lines are now.
Correct. Yeah, the stop lines I think are right at the.
Yeah, so the, i- isn't the change because of something that's happening on 12th Street? Or would, would they put the stop lines way back farther, even on our current pavement? They would?
Yeah, now, yeah, if they did it, if they rebuilt it the way they did right now, the striping would be different.
Okay.
Yeah. It is really.
So are trucks going to have a harder time making this left turn westbound than today? Or is it just, you know, applying modern traffic engineering standards, you should move the stop lines back?
It'd have to be a really big truck and it wouldn't have any more problems than it does today.
It, it would not.
It would not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
First of all, thank you for all the work that you put into this. I know switching from the roundabout to the signalized intersection and trying to keep all the funding and grants has probably been a challenge, so thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that I understood one thing. When we're talking about the million dollars that the city is going to be spending on this project, it's still coming in less than what we anticipated spending, right? You said 200,000 less?
Yep.
So it's probably already still in the budget then?
It was budgeted this year, yeah.
Great. I also appreciate the reduction of speed for, to that 20 mile an hour, also like Mr. Walters said, to keep it consistent with what's happening in the downtown, in Old Town. I also appreciate it because with us adding in these new bike lanes, or new bike lanes, more predominant bike lanes, I anticipate we'll probably see some more bikers on that corridor. So I appreciate it for that as well. As far as the truck swoops that, that we're talking about, I mean, those are already happening. And I'm, we're not going to be painting the truck swoop line, we're just going to be, right? We're just going to be expecting that there, okay.
Like training wheels, we could do that. Just kidding, no.
Sure, right. I was like.
Confused before.
Okay. And then as far as that merge lane that Ms. Cleland McGrath was, was talking about, I didn't think about the fact that a lot of people do turn right there, but I also know that a lot of people speed up there to beat across, across Oaks and 12th, to beat the cars on the other side. So I, I'm actually in favor of, of getting rid of that, that merge lane altogether. I think it'll make it, make it safer. Is there any, and again, I know it's not, we probably don't have any purview over this as we don't tell private businesses how to operate, but as we're doing this project, is there going to be any opportunity to talk to Safeway? I know many of us up here had expressed that maybe turning the parking and encouraging people to leave out the other way to Safeway. Is there an opportunity to have a conversation with them about that at all, or?
I've thought about going to talk to Safeway a few times about things. I don't know if you guys want me to be the ambassador or council to do it, but of course, yeah, we should talk to them.
I, I think it'd be, as we're doing a massive change, I mean, I just think that, because again, I was there yesterday and, and people just, it's, it's a massive smash in that area. So using this as an opportunity to maybe open that discussion and get them to change that and maybe come up with a better idea for their loading zone, but definitely getting that parking turned the other way, I think would be, we, great. And then just as a question, with these new bike lanes that are coming in, which I think is fantastic, we've also talked about eventually another phase of repaving Commercial, you know, down past, down to like 33rd or 34th Street. When we do that, are, are these bike, are these bike lanes going to only be in this section of Commercial? Or when we repave, do we plan to do those, like, continue that down?
So we, we, these are, so this, you know, I'm going to use my little cursor. These are protected by bike lanes because of this area right here, is, it keeps the bike lanes away from the traffic. What'll be, what we're proposing to do for the rest, because that, that takes curb, you got to move curb. But for the rest of Commercial, it'll be like this.
Okay, so kind of like it is now?
There is no bike lanes on Commercial right now.
Okay.
So it'd be a painted bike lane.
Okay.
But it's, you know, it's a six-foot bike lane, it's not nothing. It's, it's better than what we have now.
Great.
Similar to what we have downtown.
Great. I'm also in favor of getting this, I think you said fall of 2024. I think that's great because after going to that, that city conference and learning about all the opportunities that TIB can provide for us and potential grants, the last thing we want to do is get on that delay list. So thank you for treating that as a high priority as well.
Just real quick, Councilmember Walters mentioned, so we do have new traffic accounts and we are doing another intersection control evaluation, I believe it's what WashDOT calls it. So I'll have that, I just don't have it right now. The big one was the channelization plan and get that, because that's where a lot of the engineering design happens. And so once I have that, then it'll fly.
And I think getting a little more educated, how a modern traffic signal will work here, because I think that'll answer a lot of the stacking issues that, that council's expressing concerns with. So as we move forward with the project, I know we'll be able to provide some. So as we move forward with the project, I know we'll be able to provide some more info.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. At 11th and 13th, where the new pedestrian crosswalks are being added, are there the little push button flashlights? Is that what that tiny little round dot is?
I, I don't know that for sure. Um, I would assume there's probably an, rapid flashing beacons, RFPs is what we call those.
I didn't see anything that looked similar to that in the engineer's estimate, but it could also be wrapped up with the traffic signal system?
Yeah, it should call out RFPs so that you didn't see that in that long spreadsheet. Okay.
I also don't exactly know what I'm looking for, but I didn't see anything that said pedestrian flashing light.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you.
Should have, it should. I think it should at there, at that location. I'd, I'd have to talk to them. That's not a huge change. I mean, that's if we want those, we can have those happen.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, along with that data, the traffic count data and the modeling data, I think it would be useful to know what level of service intersection is now, what it'll be after this, and then how long it will stay at that level of service into the future. Um, I assume that that data is being generated. You just don't have it. And then also on the original 2016 South Commercial Corridor Plan, we show, uh, two-stage turn boxes for bikes to make the left turn. So if they, if they're headed northbound on Commercial Avenue, uh, in the protected bike lane, uh, provides some guidance as to where they should go to make a left turn to go north on, uh, to go west on 12th Street. And so they're not shown on this diagram, but obviously they, they could be and they were on the, on Alta's, uh, design from 2016. I, I tend to think that that could be useful because it could show bikes where to go and it could also show drivers where bikes are allowed to sit to make that left turn if they're headed northbound on, on, uh, Commercial and then want to make a left-hand turn to go west on 12th.
So in the past, they didn't have them just cross here and cross here, then get on the bike lane heading west?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the, the plan really is there. I mean, if, uh, if they're to go through the crosswalk or if they're to get into the roadway or if they get the roadway a lot later, because they're, they have the bike lanes on this drawing, but not north-south or not, uh, east-west. And here there are bike lanes, I think if you scroll up, there are east, uh, east-west bike lanes on the west side of the intersection.
Is that right?
Sorta.
Yeah, more?
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know. I would just like, um, you to raise that question with Alta and have them provide the answer for what they think. What, what did they think about the two-stage bike lanes or how turn boxes or how bikes would make that, that turn? And then, um, uh, I just wanted to point out that one of the entrances or exits, I guess, from Safeway is closed as part of this design. It's, uh, to the left here, the one with kind of the opposite facing arrow.
This one?
Yeah, where the cursor is pointing to now. That goes away. That's no longer an option to get into the Safeway parking lot. That assumedly will incentivize Safeway to stripe some more parking or maybe reverse the parking so that you could roll into the Safeway parking lot at 12th and Commercial and immediately find a place to park there. I don't, I don't, I don't know, but.
Yeah, because you still could get out over here.
Right.
So that'd be really nice if this was pointing the other way.
It will certainly incentivize discussion from Safeway.
I'd love to talk to Safeway, yeah.
That's the way to do it. Uh, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Uh, yes. So I think talking to Safeway sounds good. The only reason that makes a, what I see as a challenge of switching the direction is that then when you're leaving, you're getting dumped out on a, on a non, non, uh, signalized intersection, right? But actually, can you go back north a little bit? Um, I just wanted to, I know we've asked, we have a lot of discussions going on with, or interest in talking to Safeway. But I was curious about, if you are in the bike lane, um, from 11th to 12th going southbound, I see that there's a bike lane and then it kind of just disappears. And that whole area there is kind of a mess, um, between the, uh, drive-through and then the additional, I think it's the CBOs kind of work stuff. Um, and then CBOs also has another in, entrance exit there, yes. So is, where does the bike, where is the, where is the bike supposed to go once it hits that, once it hits that, um, entrance exit? And is there anything we can do to improve the safety for how complicated that area is?
So this is all one big, these, this little hash mark or this little line right here indicates where it's, it's a driveway. So that's why the bike lane facility ends here. Um, this is just a mixing zone, just like the mixing zone here and here, uh, where the bike and the pedestrians are sharing the same area.
Okay. Um.
This, we did try to get rid of this. It was, uh, a very concerning to CBOs for trucks deliveries, I believe it was, or that might've been this one.
Okay.
But this was, this was contentious with the, not contentious, but they just really wanted to keep that driveway.
And I, I mean, I think they do a lot of their maintenance stuff at that end of the, of the property. Um, is there any way to like, is, I don't know if there's a sign now that says you can only turn right or can you go across, take a left out of there? I, I don't know if there's anything we can do to just like make it a little bit more, um, efficient and safer.
Just a reminder, this is a 30% design, so, these are all great questions. So all, all of these inputs will be taken into account as they come up with a.
30% design, we could change anything, so I could.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to, if there's, if we can give some attention to that and maybe there isn't anything we do. But if there is, that would be another spot that is, can be difficult.
Yeah, we tried to not have that there and they were very adamant that it needs to be there for their business.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Moulton.
The, well, so when you're heading south on Commercial approaching 12th Street, what is the likelihood that we could do no left turn into the Safeway parking lot and just had a right turn lane and a go-forward lane? You could continue on to, I think maybe one of the things I do is I turn left on 11th and cut into the parking lot that way. Then you don't have to wait for the light. It's pretty simple. I think people would pick up on that. Or you can go and take a left on 13th, which isn't as easy, um, because you have more traffic coming at that point. But I don't know if there's any chance of that, if, if that is, if that idea has any merit whatsoever. But as far as having that, things, cars not stack up heading south, having the ability to turn right on red and go straight, but not go left.
Yeah.
Worthwhile question, definitely.
We could do that too. Uh, I would just, I think, well, we'll have the, we'll have the analysis done of the intersection that we could try, try that and see if it makes it get a worse grade.
Mayor Miller.
Or better.
Uh, Mr., uh, Ms. Moulton.
So I just had one quick add-on, because there are a lot of places when you're coming from Old Town, you could take, you could also take a left on 10th and then take a right on 11th and then. So, I mean, people are adaptable enough, I think, that that might not be a huge problem. Anyway, I'm done. Thanks.
So before I go to, I haven't heard from the public. This is a public, uh, comment item. Any members of the public?
We did one here from the public, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Fantini.
Just one quick question. I see over here, so the bank, um, right next to Leonard's, there's still an arrow there, uh, that kind of would allow people to go in through that, for the drive-through there at the bank. So Leonard's property right there or Mr. Johnson's property, American Dream, and then the bank is right here. I see this little arrow, keep going, right there, yeah. Are people still going to be able to get in there?
Doesn't look like it. Not 30% design.
Okay.
Might generate some discussion with the bank.
That will, maybe.
There is this driveway, so if we did that, there'd be a lot of driveway going on for protected bike and pedestrian facilities.
All right. Well, again, uh, with 30% design, any additional inputs you have, please give them to, uh, Mr. Raym. But I think that was hopefully informative.
Mayor Miller.
It was.
Oh, Mr. Walters.
So what, what's next? So we have a pretty tight timeline for doing construction. I, I don't realistically see how we even achieve that, but, um, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of opportunity to change the design. I mean, it sounds like they need to be headed full speed ahead to get the Chan Plan through WashDOT and six weeks is optimistic. And then, and then to full design and, and bid this out, so.
I mean, I could try to squeeze in another visit with you guys. I can go back over this, uh, you know, on the tape and get answers to each of your questions. Uh, but yeah, we're, we're in a hurry because of our situation with Transportation Improvement Board. Not that we want to rule out you guys' opportunities to weigh in on the design. It's just that we, we do need to move.
But I've, I've probably already asked him six times when he's going to go out to bid on this, so we know, we, we know we need to move. And I'm sorry, I think I saw a hand come up after I asked for public comment on this one, but come on up and I'll let you get it in. Only our most visible intersection in the whole city, so we want to have the, we want to have all the comments.
So since it's 30%.
Name in.
Sorry. Suzanne Roner Anacortes.
Thank you.
So what if you have it so that you cannot get to Safeway coming down 12th? You either turn right and circle around or you turn left and circle around. And therefore that intersection then becomes north-south straight through and 12th becomes either a right or left-hand lane. Just a thought. We're only 30%.
And on a timeline. All right. Okay, any, anything else? Did you want to go through the timeline, Mr. Raym, or have you?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we could try to take a little more time, but I, TIB, they're not having it. They want us to get this done and spend the grant that we have had for a long time.
All right. Well, if anything hits you while you're, uh, sleeping or something, just send them a note.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And we're going to move on to our next item, which is Item 7B. And this is, uh, email and website domain. This is a discussion, discussion item and no action. And Ms. Hsu will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Um, effective tomorrow, the city is launching a new domain for our website and email. Uh, we shared information about this with staff and with a press release, but also wanted to have a conversation, uh, with, with city council in case there were questions. So we will be transitioning away from a .org. Right now, we're cityofanacortes.org to anacorteswa.gov. Um, .gov is the domain. There's multiple benefits of transitioning to, uh, .gov. Um, it's a, designates that it's an official status. It's only available to US government entities. We had to go through a very significant vetting process to get that set up. It is less easy to be, um, impersonated, so it can help us from having our accounts, um, impersonated or have phishing attempts on them. Uh, oftentimes when there are search, uh, engines, they will move the, the .gov sites up to the, the top of those search engines because it's considered to be an accurate, reliable place to get information, um, about a government entity. And then it just also ensures consistency in our branding and identity. So what does this mean? So our city email addresses are currently our name, our first name, uh, first initial of our last name. So I'm Emily S. at cityofanacortes.org. Effective tomorrow, it's going to be Emily S. at anacorteswa.gov. So we're making that, that transition. I want to just, um, uh, help with any fears that maybe email's going to get lost during that, that timeframe. It's not. We will be able to continue to, um, have access to the cityofanacortes.org. Emails will automatically be filtered over into your new email box. But when people receive an email from you, it will show up as, um, anacorteswa.gov. We also have had two different, um, email, or excuse me, websites, uh, up and running. So you could get to our website through www.anacortes, dot anacorteswa.gov or, uh, www.cityofanacortes.org. We're going to be transitioning so that the anacorteswa.gov is the, the primary. Information on our website, our, our staff are going through and scrubbing that and making any changes necessary, um, so that it, everything is reflecting to the, the new domain. And as I, I mentioned, that the email will be received at both domains to ensure that there's, um, nothing lost. We are encouraging people to, and this applies to council members that have city of anacortes email addresses, to download your current whitelist of whitelisted addresses. And then you'll be able to then move them over to your, your new email address. That was included in the, the email that the, the mayor sent out last Thursday. It's about a 30-second process, so it's not difficult, but it will be very helpful to ensure that everybody that you've taken the time to, to ensure that they are whitelisted to your email address, that those will continue to go through. And this switch over is happening tomorrow at 6:00 AM, so we're, uh, we're excited about it. It's been a really big, um, process for our IT department. It's something that we've been talking about for years and really just helps to build the credibility of our, um, email and of our, of our websites by making that transition to .gov. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Mr. Walters.
Uh, well, I'm very pleased that we're converting to the .gov. We, we picked up this domain name in 2017. Uh, so it has been a long time in coming. Uh, and one of my questions is how far are we going to go now at this point? So for example, we have some subdomains, one of which is docs.cityofanacortes.org. And, uh, for whatever reason, it became a cityofanacortes.org subdomain when it was created. Uh, are we planning to transition it to anacorteswa.gov and any other subdomains that we have at the same time?
I think that that is the, the intention, that we're moving everything to the .gov domain setup. Um.
Are we doing it now or later, I guess is my question?
I think we're trying to, to work through everything now and, um, hopefully that there aren't items that we haven't, haven't addressed and, and looked at. Are you talking about like a Laserfish documents?
Yeah, docs.cityofanacortes.org is Laserfish web link now.
And so, um, I'm quite certain that, that we've had that, that conversation, but then I will confirm and get back to you on that.
And then how long are we planning to maintain the, the .org address? Because there are documents that are linked on the website and there's a big discussion in cyberspace about perma-links and how long perma-links are actually permanent. Do we have a plan? Have we articulated a policy?
We don't have an end date and we don't have an end date at this point, but we're going to be shifting our primary domain to the, the .gov soon.
Will there be redirects from cityofanacortes.org or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then the address bar will change when you go to a cityofanacortes.org webpage?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And I actually tested that today. Um, and that, that does work.
Anybody here in City Hall like to, uh, address the council on this subject, talk about domain names? Okay, council. Okay, yeah, there's no action here. Uh, just an opportunity to, uh, ask Ms. Hsu any questions.
Mayor Miller.
Uh, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
I guess one question is just, um, how long will the .org email continue to forward to us? Is there, is it for a month or 60 days, just for folks, I mean, who have it automatically saved?
Indefinitely at this point, but it will automatically, it'll be almost set up like an alias. So we would encourage you to transition to that. Um, we're not all going out and getting new business cards or anything like that because it will still work and that there's no, there's no end date with that. It'll be set up as an alias.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Yeah, I presumably with that sort of essentially permanent forwarding, I'm assuming we're just going to keep the .org, uh, domain name indefinitely. There's no reason to give it up anyway. It's probably 30 bucks a year.
Correct. We'll con, we'll continue with that. The, the .gov has no cost once you get through the vetting process, so.
Yeah. Cool, thanks.
All right. Okay, uh, being no further business for the council, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.